All right. Hello and welcome to this Tuesday, August 5th, Eureka City Council meeting. It's nice to see everybody here. And we will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerojigi. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And with that, could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton is absent. Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
Mayor Burgel?
Here.
And would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have a report out of closed session?
Mayor, no actions were taken in closed session.
Great. And just a housekeeping item. Item F3 will be pulled and not discussed this evening. So if you are here for that item, that will not be discussed this evening. And for our mayor's announcements, we have a proclamation. Come on up for the Coast Guard. This is Coast Guard Month. We so appreciate our Coast Guard. Welcome. Okay. So this is the City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of United States Coast Guard Month and the City of Eureka's 25th anniversary as a Coast Guard city, August 2025. Whereas the Coast Guard is one of America's armed forces and traces its founding to August 4th, 1790, when Congress authorized construction of 10 vessels to enforce tariff and trade laws, prevent smuggling, and protect the collection of federal revenue. And whereas, the Coast Guard is a maritime military, multi-mission service, unique among the U.S. military branches for having a maritime law enforcement mission with jurisdiction in both domestic and international waters. And whereas, 29 cities have taken strides to acknowledge the contributions and services provided by Coast Guard men and women assigned to their cities. The Coast Guard has in turn recognized these cities as official Coast Guard cities, as a way to show their appreciation for the city's efforts to extend so many considerations to the Coast Guard family and their dependents. And whereas Humboldt County, along with Mendocino and Del Norte Counties, are served by the proud Coast Guard servicemembers of Sector Humboldt Bay and Sector San Francisco, many of whom live in the greater Eureka area, enroll their children in Eureka City Schools, and are an integral part of our wonderful community. And whereas on June 3rd, 2000, the City of Eureka was designated as the second official Coast Guard city and was re-designated in 2011, 2019, and 2024, and has taken great pride in the contributions of the Coast Guard to our community. The City of Eureka is proud and grateful to celebrate 25 years as a Coast Guard city. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kim Burgel, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim August 2025 as U.S. Coast Guard Month and recognize the Coast Guard's many contributions to the well-being and vibrancy of our community.
(applause)
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We'd like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you and good evening. I'm here today with my Command Senior Chief, Heather Coulter, and my Deputy Commander Andrew Bacon. On behalf of the men and women of Coast Guard Sector Humboldt Bay, thank you to the City of Eureka for this meaningful proclamation recognizing August as Coast Guard Month. Not only is it the Coast Guard's 235th birthday, it's also the City of Eureka's 25th anniversary as a Coast Guard city. Sector Humboldt Bay is home to a proud and capable multi-mission Coast Guard. Our units include the sector, the air station, Stations Humboldt Bay and Noyal River, Coast Guard Cutter Barracuda, and the aids-to-navigation team. Together, we carry out critical missions, flying the MH-65 in some of the most challenging conditions in the country, piloting surf boats across dangerous bars, conducting lifesaving search-and-rescue operations, protecting our environment, enforcing maritime law, maintaining aids-to-navigation, and performing the essential support functions that keep us ready. Our history in this community runs deep. The Coast Guard presence in Humboldt Bay dates back to 1856 with the establishment of the Humboldt Bay entrance light. Despite that early beacon, treacherous conditions led to 23 major shipwrecks before the lifesaving station was established in 1878. From those roots, our presence and partnerships have continued to grow, fueled by the need and the strong bond between this community and the Coast Guard. The bond is more than operational, it's personal. Coast Guard families live here, our children attend local schools, our spouses and partners work in your businesses. Eureka doesn't just host us, it welcomes us. Many of our members return for second and third tours, a testament to the deep connection they feel to this community and the support that you offer. As we celebrate the Coast Guard's 235th birthday, we also honor the families who serve alongside us. Their strength and support make our mission possible. We also remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice, whose legacy inspires us to live up to the highest standards of service. Your continued support directly strengthens our ability to serve this region. The City of Eureka was the second-designated Coast Guard city. You've always been a steadfast partner, providing a safe harbor in emergencies, and standing with us in our shared mission to protect lives and ensure maritime safety. This proclamation is more than a gesture, it's a reflection of a longstanding and deeply valued relationship. To the people of Eureka and the City Council, congratulations on 25 years as a Coast Guard city. Thank you for recognizing the Coast Guard on our 235th birthday. I know that your support won't stop at the end of August, it runs year-round. Thank you for embracing our service members and our families as your own. We're proud to serve along you, side you. So semper pratis. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you. on up. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Burgel. I'm Debra Dukes. I'm here not as a representative of the Energy Committee because we didn't have enough time to go through all the red tape to get here officially. However, I do sit on that committee. I'm also on the RCEA Community Advisory Committee and an active member of 350 Humboldt. You should have, you just got, I think, a flyer about, would you like these? A flyer about kind of a last-minute energy and sustainability fair that has almost literally been thrown together since the federal incentives for things like electric vehicles and electric home appliances, sustainable upgrades to homes and so forth, since they were eliminated the end of June, instead of going through 2031 as originally planned. So a bunch of us got together and came up with an energy fair. It will be August 19th, Tuesday, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Jefferson Center in the multipurpose room. And it's going to involve some local contractors. We have asked, rather than just opening it wide open, we have asked people that we personally have dealt with and can vouch for. This person did a great job in my house, so I can vouch for them. It will also have people from Redwood Coast Energy Authority talking about how you can stack or combine incentives, including the federal ones that are going away, but also ones from PG&E, the State of California, RCEA, and other places that I don't even know about, but RCEA does. They will also have some loner induction burners there for you to try before you buy an induction stove and see just how fast your water's going to boil, because you don't want to walk away and figure you've got a certain amount of time left before it boils over, because it will boil over, and then you'll spend your time cleaning up around your stove. There will also be people, I'm one of them, who have been, who have adopted some of these technologies, including heat pumps, heat pump water heaters, electric vehicles, solar panels, whole-house batteries, smaller batteries, like to just power a fridge or medical equipment, and any number of other sustainable appliances and home improvements. There will be people there from RC-AA who will help folks who are low-income homeowners and who are thinking, "I can never afford this," to figure out how they can stack incentives to get some of this stuff for free. We're trying to reach out to those people and also to people who have kind of been on the fence, "Yeah, maybe when my hot water heater goes, I'll buy a heat pump hot water heater." Or, "Yeah, I want my car, my next car to be an EV, but I don't know that much about it." And I, you know, the incentives are going to be around for a while. Well, some will, but the federal ones won't be. If you're thinking about an EV, those powers or those incentives go away the end of September. And almost all of the rest of the incentives for home improvements and for appliances go away December 31st. So it's a matter of acting now if you're even, excuse me, even considering replacing appliances or upgrading your home. And there's a lot, it can be done much less expensively than perhaps you think, and there will be people there to help figure that out. I have some of these flyers out here on the table in the hallway, so if any of you want to take them for yourselves or other folks, there's a QR code on there where you can get more information. And I will be around for a while and be happy to answer any questions now or later. And thank you for getting me in this quickly. Matt was wonderful. He says, "The only way it's going to work is if you can get in under the mayor's announcements." So a thousand thanks.
You're welcome. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you for, thank you for presenting this and telling us about the timeline, because I thought we had until the end of the calendar year, but it sounds like it's happening a lot sooner with a lot of these. Do you have the, do you have the flyer in a digital format?
I do, and I can get that to you.
Please.
I was down, I'm cheap, so I have a black and white printer at home, and so I was down at Staples getting these printed out so they'd be nice and colorful. But I have the, the digital format, and I'll be happy to send it to all of you through, through you, Pam.
Please, yeah.
Any other questions?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I just want, had a quick comment. Thank you for doing this. About a week ago, I was sitting in a meeting and a woman whose husband is an attorney said, or, excuse me, a tax accountant, said that they were doing a whole bunch of things because they knew that this was going to go, and he knew when everything was, and I thought, "Oh, I wish I knew when that was. There's no way I'm going to, either, you know, I'm not going to take the time to figure this out." I really appreciate that you guys are doing this. I think that's really helpful, so I'm, thank you.
You're exactly the sort of person we're aiming for. See you in two weeks.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Again, thank you, Mayor Burgel and council. Thanks for being here. I did have one other announcement. I wanted to let folks know, whether you're on Zoom or in chambers, that we will be having a special meeting about PERS, August 26th at 5:00 p.m. So it's August 26th, 5:00 p.m., special meeting about PERS.
It's PERS, or PERS?
Retirement. And we've had, a lot of the community has been asking about that, and so I hope that a lot of you are, come to the meeting and so we can have a robust conversation. All right. So with that, we'll move on to the public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Time allotment for public comment on non-agenda items is a maximum of 30 minutes and shall be allotted to receiving public comment at the initial public comment period. If necessary, an additional period shall be allotted to public comments after City Manager reports, but only if the first 30-minute public comment period was not sufficient to allow all those who wish to speak to do so. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. And at the time an item is considered, the mayor will ask those attending the meeting in person to line up on both sides of council chambers or raise their hands. And for, and for remote participants to use *9 on the telephone or the, or the raise hand function in Zoom if they wish to address the City Council. The maximum amount of time for each person to speak and the total amount of time allotted for each item will be determined based on the number of people indicating an interest in speaking and the amount of business to be conducted on the agenda. In certain circumstances, and when necessary to ensure a full opportunity for public input, the mayor may adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or the time allotted for each speaker. Do we have anybody from the public who is here to comment on non-agenda items?
I'm not sure what that means.
That means items that are not on the agenda. So if you have something that you wanted to talk about that is not agendized, you can talk about it now. Yeah. Welcome.
It's good to see you all. Most people are ignorant about why it's important to support Israel, and most people are ignorant in their understanding about the war that is going on over there. Yes, people on both sides are dying, but this is not a battle between flesh and blood. This is a spiritual battle. When you see this, it's not a battle of the flesh. You will love and pray for both, the people of Israel and the people of Palestine. Israel belongs to God, Yahweh. The Jews are his chosen people. Going against Israel is going against God. The Bible says in Numbers 24:9, "Blessed is, blessed is he who blesses you, and cursed is he who curses you." This refers to a promise God made to Abraham concerning Israel and the Jews. I support Israel out of my love for Christ and what he commands. I am grateful our current president supports Israel. I personally believe it is a sign of God's mercy upon America and gives us more time to repent from all our foolishness. The Bible says in Romans 2:4, "Or do you despise the riches of his goodness, forbearance, and longsuffering, not knowing that the goodness of God leads you to repentance?" I pray for the peace of Jerusalem. May they prosper who love you. Because of the household of the Lord our God, I will seek your good. This is a quote that I've always cherished. It says, "It is always night to a blind man, and it is always day to a man with a lantern, provided he can see." To God be the glory. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome.
I've been here before about traffic safety. My name's Dave Stateri, proud Coast Guard veteran. And this is Michael Murphy. He's a friend of mine that was killed at Harrison Albee last September. And Michael drove his motorized handicap scooter out in the road, and he wasn't in the intersection, I guess, but with school coming up, you know, I would, I would encourage, you know, that we do obey the school speed limits, Coast Guard children going to school. And that, with Michael's accident, he was hit in the left lane by Kletzky's Warehouse there at Albee and Elizabeth Street. But a second car pulled out from Prospect and came in the right lane, okay? And Michael got thrown off his scooter and sent into the right lane by the liquor store, the right side there. And the car that came off of Prospect up Harris was warned, "Hey, there's something going on. There's something going on up here. Watch out." And the second car went around the warning person. Hit my friend the second time. And my point is, it's encouraging, you know, off our devices, watching what's going around, what's happening, you know? Because you know, you know, fourth and R are different places. People just walk in front of you, or they ride their motorized scooter or their skateboard. And Michael's a good guy. He has some disablements, but, you know, he's just a good guy, and he did something stupid. But I would just encourage, you know, with school coming up, traffic safety, putting it out there, you know, thank you that the, the chief has been putting some people out there, and they've been getting a few people that have been breaking the law. I have friends that are working on South Broadway at night, and policemen did a good job the other night protecting the construction guys out there. He did a good job. But now, I'm a third-generation Eurican and third-generation veteran. Now I have a fifth generation here, two new drivers. And I tell them, you know, you gotta, you can't be on the device. You gotta concentrate the whole time. So, you know, I wished we could just, you know, have a couple of folks that just did enforcement and we didn't have to send our money down to Sacramento. We could just keep it to fund our own, our own people. But, yeah, just, just the public, you know, being concerned with school coming up. And, and the speed limit at the schools is in effect, I found out, for BPD the whole time the kids are in school. I thought it was just coming and going, but it's not. While the kids are in the building, the school limit is in, in effect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers? Would you like to comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move over to Zoom.
Jay Doe? Got it. Jay Doe?
The public must know that your staff are above the law. No one warned me. If I embark a city employee to my home, my right to privacy is nullified. Your employee used city hardware to covertly film me nude and license the content to third parties, and leverage authority a city IT officer to coerce me into silence through a one-year SOL. May 23rd this year, EPD sought warrant for multiple phones to find all his numbers routed to your Samsung Galaxy. He told police they wouldn't find the explicit videos of me because he'd already deleted them from the device. After their review found he was creating and transmitting pornography from your hardware, EPD advised me, "Withdraw now so city HR can act on his admission." I withdrew, and you promptly returned him to council chamber duty on camera, handing him phone back to do it again. You confirmed receipt of the metadata linked to your device timestamp spanning six weeks. You refused offers to verify existence of the footage depicting my lack of awareness in his body and frame, and then had to gall to tell me, "No media exist." No shit. He's the CS admin, and you reinstated his untraceable God-level access to your digital infrastructure. Why? He often told me, "No one else is trained in the systems he designed and automated, handling everything himself at all hours." Phone in hand, under guise of this remote work, he had been filming without regard to my autonomy, self-assured with his philosophy that nudity isn't sexual. Weeks later, I found him perusing his archive, re-watching these moments in which I recalled him simply there focused on his phone. I was horrified, like, "You can see my face and tattoos. You know I didn't consent to that. You need to delete that." And his reaction to my distress wasn't even, "I'm sorry I'm deleting them," rather he refused, explaining, quote, "I can't lose any footage of Willie," unquote. I still wake weakly to find myself out of bed, having bolted across room in a panic, feeling exposed despite my layers of clothing. Cropping my face out was a pointless gesture. The contact will persist outside my control indefinitely. Indexed by my face, I never consented to Google's Terms of Service Eureka did for me. What unpublished policy authorized this? No answer from city clerk, HR, nor my ward-five council member. You declined to have me sign a release and enforce your ironclad personnel policy, setting dangerous precedent to protect promising middle-aged man because you let him become your single point of failure. Apparently, in Eureka, Pride Means rebranded the Carson Mansion with rainbows, and Stonewall survivors to grant your CS admin the same rights treatment have held, the sacred use of city hardware to commit sexual voyeurism, non-consensual distribution, and admit to police to violating a dozen internal policies with the city's blessing. You're asking all staff and residents to trust this man with our personal data and city surveillance system while your personnel rulebook is a facade? How many others in power here are you shielding over their 20 minutes of action just like
Do you see anybody else on Zoom?
I see no one else.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so we'll close this public comment and bring it to council reports. Everybody Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Let's see, since our last council meeting, I attended the Disability Pride Festival. I've hosted and attended several housing-related meetings. One of the things that's been discussed is just the, some concern around how the forthcoming regional housing need application, numbers are going to be assessed, allocation numbers are going to be assessed, and so that's just something I'm tracking and thinking about. A couple of Eureka Main Street meetings, including hosting the Economic Vitality Meeting, in which we're doing a lot of brainstorming around supporting Eureka businesses, talking about the Choose Humboldt campaign and other kind of business-centric campaigns. I attended Arts Alive and Friday Night Market. That's what I've been up to.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last council meeting, I was at the National Association for Latino-Elected and Appointed Officials, their annual conference, this time in Atlanta, Georgia, so the Naleo Conference. It was, it was superb, to say the least. I was able to attend panels and workshops on homeownership, professional development for Latino residents, issues covering AI regulations, emergency responses for disasters, and of course, the onslaught of federal regulations coming through that are just having a huge dampening effect, not, not only here locally, but at other, other, other parts of the country. And so it's, it's difficult to say that, that we're not unique in our experience, but at least we know that there are others out there commiserating with what's going on. And then I know, hearing, hearing that this is a conference for Latino-elected officials, yes, it's, there were a lot of folks from California there, but, but otherwise, it was through the lens of, of what it's like being a Latino in these shared and diverse communities. Even one of the colleagues from Arcata City Council had attended Kimberly White, so it was nice to have that colleague there. When we're talking about not being unique in a lot of what's going on, everyone there, everyone, whether it was California or Georgia or other parts of the country, are having housing issues, very similar to ours. I know it's an average, but the prices since 2020 on homeownership, on trying to buy a house, have gone up about 47%. So again, this isn't something that just affects one community, it affects us all. And when we're, when we're talking about it, of course, there were conversations there about immigration, and not just in the sense of the labor force, but also just in our general population growth. As we've seen here in this country, the birth rate has declined, but it is being, it is, we do see it on the rise in immigration families or immigrant families here in our country. And so it was, it was fantastic opportunity to talk with representatives, again, from around the country, but particularly in Georgia, East Point, just outside of Atlanta there, has conducted a community nerd, uh, needs survey, and this is something that I'd brought up to City Manager in some of our conversations. And I know the county has done similar surveys, RC-AA has done them in the past, but we haven't done anything, you know, again, for the, the unique needs of our city, because that's, that's where we have our seat of power, you know? It's, as much as we try to work with other municipalities and such, it's very much, what is it that we see, or what is it that our community needs for all the lifting that we're doing with our unhoused population, for the folks that need medical appointments? We're doing a lot as a singular city, as a singular municipality in this very rural, very remote area. And so I know that that's something that I would like to have us discuss, is a community needs survey at our strategic visioning meeting, I think that's in October. Do I have that right, or?
September.
September. There we go. Took us a while to land on a date, and so I'm still. And then I did want to point out that there, thank you. I did want to point out that there are some evidence-based resources to, available for low or no cost, in helping us develop policies to lift up our Eureka community, and so some of those included the Urban Institutes, Upward Mobility Framework, Result for America's Economic Mobility Ca- Result for America's Economic Mobility Catalog. And then also the National League of Cities has their Equitable Economic Mobility Initiative that provides technical assistance for grant funding and peer-to-peer learning. So I know that's something I'd like to have more in discussion as we move forward, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I attended League of California Cities Board of Directors meeting about mid-July and always a great time to hang out with the council members from all over the state. We had a great presentation from a board member who happens to be a police chief. And it was about personal and staff safety awareness. And so he put together a little, it's a little two-page thing that helps, you know, as I've mentioned before, about political discourse in, in our community. It's not just our community, it's across the state. And other council members have shared concerns about, you know, how do we, how do we deal with that? How we deal with the, the lack of civility? Happy to share that with anybody who's interested. We talked a lot about bills coming up, right? State of, uh, state of the state, you know, the, the budget crisis that we're kind of facing. We talked about cap and trade was a big point in discussion. Money for things like organic waste siting, which has been a it's been a challenge forever to try and figure out how to deal with the mandate to, you know, compost our, our organic waste. So CalCities has always been a good venue for where I try to get, you know, Eureka's issues brought up and hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll see things improve when a, a state budget comes around. Maybe we can get some things happening here. I also just had a meeting with Assemblyman Rogers, who represents our, our area here. And we talked about energy, you know, there's some good stuff on, on the energy front, trying to get costs controlled from our, our primary, you know, distributor, I should say, PG&E. So we're talking about energy, talked about housing. And he was, hopefully, you know, he's very supportive of our community and it was great to see him and get to share some time with them for an hour or so. And I think I'll just probably leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Conchaire Stalot?
Uh, yeah, so some of the local stuff, I, I got to attend the COP Board meeting. And that's our community oversight on police practices and got to listen in on that and listen to our chief's presentation. They talked about, you know, proactive policing and some of the things that they're doing in our community. And specifically, and I know the gentleman already left, but one of the things they're doing is really addressing some of those dangerous traffic situations that that one person brought up and very grateful for that. I attended online a CalCities Coastal Update, talking about sea level rise and kind of planning around that. What kind of money is still going to be available to communities and, you know, what isn't going to be there? Had our emergency ad, emergency shelter ad hoc, where we've continued to talk about potential possibilities. I got to meet with Assemblyman Damon Connolly. We talked about a few different things, cap and trade being one of them. Also, he's from San Rafael, who successfully put together a, an encampment there that kind of feeds up into services and gets people kind of off the streets and into housing. So we, he and I talked about that pretty extensively. And he got me in contact with some of the leadership down in San Rafael. And then there's the CalCities, the Government Care Court, or excuse me, Governors Care Court. And that was discussing about some of the things they're going to be trying to pursue and how to help people who are on the streets, who are suffering from severe mental health crises and that sort of thing. I got the Harbor Two by Two tomorrow, tomorrow. And then this is just something that I think is going to be exciting for me to kind of bring back is I was accepted to a program for Indigenous Conservation Collaborations. It's an eight-week program. I'll be working with other leaders throughout the country, specifically talking about how to expand collaborations between Indigenous communities when you're working for green energy or the climate. So that's my report.
Congratulations. You're welcome. So I just have a few things. I just returned, Councilmember Moulton and I just returned from Kamisu, Japan. Kamisu, Japan flew us over to Kamiso for their 20th anniversary as a city. There was a lot that happened over there and I'm really tired. So I'm just going to let you know that we are going to be having a presentation. We'll be working on that and bringing it forward, but it was really, it was an incredible opportunity to be there and to be a part of such, something so big. And like I said, we'll be bringing that back when Councilmember Moulton is here and we'll have a presentation on that. Other than that, I did attend to Get Out and Play Day. I was part of the Family Olympics and oh my gosh, you guys, fam, the Get Out and Play Day was off the chain this year. There's just so many people out having a good time, just, you know, community getting together. It's just so fun to be a part of our community and all the events that are consistently happening. And I just want to thank, I don't know if he's still here, Chief Citro and Humboldt Bay Fire for that slip and slide. Always a great time. And the kids, I mean, it was just, it was such a beautiful day and the kids and even grownups had such a time playing on that. I wanted to say that, let's see, I've gone to or had some constituent meetings, been to the summer concerts. And again, you know, if you don't get out to community events, I really encourage you to do so. We have an excellent community that is a lot of fun, that's very friendly and just, it's a joy to be out with everybody. And I'm never surprised, well, actually, I'm always surprised at who I run into out there, like friends from high school, friends from the third grade, like, you know, I grew up here, so I have that, that luxury. But always just a wonderful thing. And then lastly, this coming Sunday, which is the 10th, is the 10th Annual Humboldt Bay Marathon. That was something that was started by Terry Roman Little and Rich Baker back 10 years ago. I've participated every year. This year I'm running the half. The marathon starts at seven, the half at eight, and then there's, this year there's a 10K that starts at 9:00 AM. All of that stuff is culminating at Matticat Plaza. So there will be a DJ down there, so if you get an opportunity to just go root on the, the runners, it's always a great time. And I don't know this year how many international runners we have, but we consistently have international runners. This is a qualifier for Boston, which is a pretty big deal because it's a flat course, it's relatively cool. And so it makes it a bit less challenging to qualify, I think. I don't know, I probably shouldn't say that because people train really hard, but. Anyway, if you get an opportunity, it's DJ Kev's going to be down there at Matticat Plaza, having a good time. And lastly, if you haven't been on Matticat this year, ah, you gotta go. It's so fabulous. I hadn't been on it all year and I got to go out a couple of weeks ago and just hear the story and just be out in the, in the bay and see all the beauty that we live with here in Eureka. We are a blessed community. We really, we really are, and I'm grateful to be a part of it and to live here. So with that, we will move on to our public hearings. So our first public hearing is Appeal of the Jara Wooden, is it Jan? I don't have my glasses on, Door Replacement Historical Preservation Review with Assistant Planner Gonzalez. Welcome.
Okay, so, good evening, councilmembers. I'm Assistant Planner Gonzalez and today I will be presenting the appeal of the HARA Wood and Door Replacement Historic Preservation Review at 904 M Street. 904 M Street is in the northern portion of the city, several blocks south of downtown. Moving in closer, the subject property outlined in yellow is on the southwest corner of 9th and M Street. The main residence, which is outlined in red, was constructed in 1895 and is described in the Green Book as a two-story queen on house with the large, oided, round arched windows in the first floor bay and a 1922 rear addition. The current layout of the carriage house where the door replacements will occur, outlined here in blue, is first seen on Sanborn Maps from 1949. The applicant is proposing to replace three mismatched wooden doors on the east-facing facade of the carriage house, which faces the rear of the main residence seen in this image, with three wooden doors featuring a nine-light design. The doors are located approximately 80 feet from M Street and approximately 35 feet from 9th Street, as seen in these images. At its June 4th, 2025 meeting, during which the applicant was unable to attend, the commission conditionally approved the project, adding a new condition A requiring the installation of three five-panel doors that match the existing design of two of the current doors, instead of the applicant proposed nine-light doors. The commission expressed concern that the existing doors appear to be original and removing the five-panel design would detract from the building's historic character. The applicant submitted a timely appeal and requested the city approve the, the project as proposed. Per their written submission, which is, can be found in Attachment 2 of the Agenda Summary, the applicant states that the existing doors are interior doors repurposed for exterior use and may not be original. Market options for five-panel doors do not meet the carriage house size requirements and would require a more intrusive installation method. There's a high cost to source similar quality doors. And there are financial constraints to sourcing those doors. And the proposed design is better suited for the current function of the rooms as a shared laundry and trash area, serving both the long-term tenants of the carriage house and the residents of the single-family residence. So in Eureka Municipal Code, Chapter 157, Section 157006C, it requires a proposed alteration to be reviewed in light of its effect on the existing historical character of the effective structure as it relates to the streetscape. In addition, the review is based on the Secretary of Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. These standards recognize the need to alter or add to a historic property to accommodate its continuing or changing uses while retaining the historic character as it has evolved over time. As discussed in the Agenda Summary and the original staff report, the proposed nine-light door design is consistent with these standards and the required findings for an alteration to historic structure consistent with EMC 157006C can be made. So staff recommendation is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution modifying the Historic Preservation Commission's conditional approval by removing Condition A to allow the replacement of three wooden doors with the proposed nine-light doors as originally proposed. I have a suggested motion when you're ready, but we'll stop screen sharing. Staff and the applicant are here if you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing no one, we will open, open this public hearing. Is there anyone here that is here to comment on this item in this public hearing? Sure, sure. You can come up one at a time, you have. Okay.
Here are the doors.
That's the bottom, this is the top.
Hi. Mayor Bergel, thank you for seeing us and Welcome. Let's make sure the microphone's on. There you go, we want to hear you.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
What am I supposed to do? Oh, okay. Hello, Mayor Bergel, thank you for seeing us and council members. So do you have any questions on our project? Anybody?
No questions. Thank you for being here.
Okay. That, I think Alex did a great job at pretty much saying everything that we wanted to. Yeah, we're just trying to improve the property really and make it pleasant for our professionals, traveling professionals that we have staying in the carriage house. And so we would like light, it's very dark, and of course, those other doors are falling off. We could find other doors similar to those five-panel doors that are, I mean, we could find them, but it's just not what I want. It's not my preference. And so I feel like this matches the style of the building and I think it would be pleasant and cute. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Fernandez, did you have a question?
Yeah, for staff after, I'm, I'm just curious on procedurally, how did we end up here? Because it sounds, yeah.
Yeah, so they applied for regular historic preservation review of the proposed project. The commission put a condition to require a style of door that wasn't what the applicant proposed. And then the applicant does have the right to appeal that within 10 days. They did so, and so this is a review of the original decision to essentially remove that condition.
Yeah. So before any follow-up, a point of order, we do need to close the public hearing and then we can have questions. So if there's no one else from the audience that would care to comment on this item or on Zoom? You see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so we will close this public hearing. Thank you for your presentation. And we will bring it back to council for Councilmember Conchaire Stalot.
I just, I love architecture, I want to geek out on it for like one second. But divided light windows or divided panel windows are very, very old. And so, I mean, even though this is a modern take on that same idea, it was so costly to make large pieces of glass, that's why those types of small glass panel windows even existed. And so they are really old and they were, I mean, they predate 1800s, but go well into the 1800s where the, this period of this building is. And so to me, it doesn't really seem that out of pocket anyway, so I just thought I'd point that out.
So did you want to make a motion then?
Absolutely. Just want to
She's, she'll put it up there.
Stick it up there for me. Okay. Oh, okay. I know. Somebody, somebody took my glasses that didn't belong to me that used to be back there in the hallway. Okay, I'm going to make a motion. I move the city council, the city of Eureka, adopt a resolution modifying the Historic Preservation Commission's conditional approval by removing Condition A to allow the replacement of three wooden doors with the proposed nine-light doors on the east-facing facade of the carriage house located at 904 M Street.
Second.
Are there any further comments? Councilmember Castellano?
You're good. I just want to appreciate the applicants, you know, that you appreciated your application and your mindfulness to history and, you know, using quality materials. And look forward to, you know, your continued renovations on your home.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, even, even seeing physically, thank you for the show and tell, if you will. I was just, just reading the description and hearing what Councilmember Conchaire Stalot should put, it's, it's not inconsistent. So that's why I was very curious procedurally how we ended up here because it seems very much in the vein of how it would look or how it might and to know that historical perspective, that a single pane of glass much larger than what you've proposed would been very expensive back then. This again, keeps the aesthetic of what was, so thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, just real quick, I, I just want to point out too that the policy says to encourage and support preservation and rehabilitation. Doesn't say you shall do it a certain way. So, you know, you're doing a great job of trying to preserve, you know, the, the historic character of those doors. So I think it looks great. Thanks for bringing that over.
Please vote.
For yes votes, Councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries.
Thank you. And that moves us to our second public hearing, Annual Rate Review of Service Rate Adjustment for Solid Waste Collection with Project Manager Prasker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Robin Prasker, Project Manager with the Community Services Department. And tonight we have the Recology Rate Review for fiscal year '24, '25 and '25, '26. So quick project background, Recology does have an exclusive contract in Eureka to collect trash recycling and green waste along with public receptacles, street sweeping and hauling of biosolids. Each year, Recology submits a request to increase the rates, typically effective July 1st of each year. And the city has begun working with Chris Bell, a CPA of Bell &amp; Associates with a specialty in waste management. And he has assisted with the review of these rate increase requests. We also have him present tonight, along with the Recology General Manager and Executive Director of HWOMA. So the rate review process that Chris has performed for us is a comprehensive financial and operational analysis from data provided by Recology. And within that analyzation, they're looking at the route collection hours compared to the customer counts and using predictive testing for the revenue of each line of business to ensure it's reasonable with the number of customers. Also looking at direct costs to determine if the expenses are reasonable in relation Also looking at direct costs to determine if the expenses are reasonable in relation to the customer and operational data. And predicted testing of disposal to determine if the reported disposal expensive is reasonable. Also reviewing the costs between the city and Recology's other franchise collection operations as they do service many other jurisdictions in the area. So starting with fiscal year 24, 25, which is before you tonight, that application underwent extensive review, which delayed bringing it to you sooner. There was a lot of detailed data requests, requested by us from Recology, and it took an iterative process to get what we needed to perform the full review. Since then, we've actually developed a new way to receive data from Recology each, each year that's very detailed and provides the information that Chris Bell recommends we receive each year moving forward. So that new template was applied to both the fiscal year 24, 25, and 25, 26 rate application. And through that process, the 24, 25 rate increase for 4.29% is justified based off increases to allowable costs, pass-through costs, disposal costs, the city's franchise fee, and then Recology's margin. That results in a 4.29% increase across all rates for the previous fiscal year and a 94 cent decrease to the green waste rate, which is its own standalone rate. That was effective July 1st based off Recology going ahead and increasing that rate without us bringing it to you yet. But we have reviewed it and have deemed it justified. So I'm going to move on to the 25, 26 application, and then we can definitely go back to the slide if we need to during questions and all that. So fiscal year 25, 26, these rates would be effective July 1st of this year. And I'm going to go a little deeper into the breakdown of these increases since it is a larger increase. So solid waste disposal is the fee that HWMA charges to dispose of the trash there. And that fee has gone up significantly. That's contributing to almost a quarter of this rate increase. Similarly, the fee that Recology charges for processing the recycling, we have a local recycling facility out in Samoa where all the recycling is sorted. Their fee has gone up as well. The green waste fee has also increased because some of it goes to West Green. The other was going down to the mill in Scotia, and they're no longer accepting the material. So that means excess material that West Green cannot take is actually going up to Anderson for recycling, which is where our landfill is where we take our trash. Consistent across the industry, there's been union negotiations for the waste industry that has significantly increased the hourly rate they're paid. That's another quarter of this increase. Trucks are more expensive than they were nine years ago, so as the trucks age out, there's an increase to replace those. A very small decrease in pass-through, pass-through costs. And then the 20% margin that Recology receives on allowable costs increases, and then the city's franchise fee, 9% of gross receipts also increases. So that results in the 9.46% increase. And then the green waste fee increases 94 cents because that is its own rate. Now, one thing during this extensive review process that was found that is being adjusted this year is an overallocation of sweet sweep, street sweeping disposal costs. So once it was found that it was over allocated in the 25, 26 application, we reviewed all rates since the inception of street sweeping in 2016 to do a full audit. And we cumulatively found that 119,000 was over allocated across those years. So those have been deducted from this year's application. And that does bring this year's rates down a little over one percentage point, resulting in the 9.4, 9.46% total brought to you tonight. So that's all I have for now. There's a lot more details in the agenda summary, but I'll pause here and can go back to any slide for any questions or discussion. And yeah, I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Great. Are there any questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Thanks for the report and thanks for all of the work you've done around the compiling the data. I'm curious. You know, in some ways, this has been kind of a long time coming and is reflective of sort of a period of changes that now people are accounting for. And so, you know, nearly 5% is a relatively high increase, you know, and I know that we may be looking at future increases due to the SB 1383 and the compost regulations. Do you have a sense of, you know, given the nature of this increase, if it's, if it's going to be like relatively stable until we see that next, you know, compost-related fee increase? Or are we going to be expecting kind of more increases next year or?
Yeah, I can answer that a little bit. So we plan to bring a new Recology franchise to you in the next few months that would be effective January 1st of next year and would replace the current franchise agreement. At that time, we would also be bringing the proposed rates for the new organic service that will be added. With those rates effective July 1st of next year, we don't have any numbers yet, so it's hard to say, but there will be startup costs with all the new totes and the education. But through all of this auditing and diving in so deep into their operations, we are seeing ways to cut costs and find efficiencies. So we'll be bringing a few ideas to you that we think can lower costs in other areas while we know we'll be taking on newer costs for the new program. So that's on everybody's mind. And all this work in these two rate reviews have really paved the way for those conversations and those actions in the upcoming months in that new franchise.
And I'll add that the new franchise agreement, we, through those negotiations, it turned out that there's going to be a pretty consistent franchise agreement amongst all of the franchisees. And currently under our agreement now, we're at 20% allowable margin for Recology. And the new agreement will go down to 14%. So while that doesn't mean we're not going to see increases, those increases will be lessened because their allowable margins have been lessened through those negotiations that Community Services and project manager Prasker and, and director Wood have done a very good job of keeping an eye on the rates and making sure that we can get the best service and at a most cost-effective rate.
Great. And I'm curious, kind of, thank you. You know, and just the, the line of questioning is a little bit on like, you know, how, how do we prepare our, you know, our citizenry to, you know, as like rates go up? How do we educate them? How do, you know, make sure that they under, or how do we inform them maybe? You know, but I guess I'm just curious with the billing, you know, and when folks start to see the rates, is, is there kind of an announcement that's going to go out that will explain it? Or is it just like one day, you're like, no, no, my rates are a little higher?
Is that in regards to the new organic service next year?
Well, that and just the, the, I mean, these bill, these rates have already been implemented. So I guess people are somewhat used to them already, even though we're not.
Last year's was implemented. This year's has not yet, pending tonight. There would be adjustments to the billing for the bills that already went out for July 1st. I guess you could say people are maybe used to it, but it comes to council, we do a newspaper notice, and then the bill does publish a line in it that says a new city-approved rate increases included. I think there's always room for improvement with billing and communication. And I think since the bills will need to be adjusted for this upcoming year, should we get your approval tonight, there will need to be a special dash of communicating that better, which we've been talking about. But we definitely did not want to come to you until we had all the ducks in a row and could really tell you that the rates are justified. So I wish we could have been here sooner. But we'd rather come with the right information fully reviewed before taking any action.
For sure. I think y'all are doing a great job. I just, yeah, trying to kind of think how we can prepare folks.
Definitely.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. So, so thank you for explaining the process. Can you, can you walk me through one more time then how this was missed in '24? Because it sounds like, again, you know, it wasn't brought to council, but it was implemented anyhow.
Yes.
So how does that happen?
Yeah. So at the time of, I guess, June of last year, that would have been the time we'd be preparing to come to you. And at that time, we were making data requests in extensive detail to Recology to be able to verify what they submitted. And we were not getting that information in enough time for July 1st. So we did not come because we couldn't present the rates to you with staff having reviewed it. So over those next few months, Chris Bell worked with Recology to let them know exactly what he needed and needed to see in the books to review. And we did receive that information eventually. It also coincided with the city's franchise negotiations that have been ongoing two years. So within those negotiations, negotiations and data requests too, a lot of information was finally received and reviewed. And then it was only until now we were able to come to you with the full review and the justification along with the street sweeping disposal finding, which came a little bit sooner in the timeline. So then that was re-reviewed again.
And, and I understand you're, you're asking for the justification for last year. You're asking for that evidence. And that's, that's helpful because it sounds like it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like it was more of a delay then?
Yeah.
Okay. But, but they still went ahead and implemented it. And that's, that's where I'm having some issue with that language because.
Yeah. So actually, I can attest to the email chain that occurred where we said we're unable to bring the rates to City Council at this time due to needing this information. And the general manager at that time replied and did say, we're going to go ahead and increase the rates. And if you do find any adjustments are needed, we will make those adjustments. So that was a decision Recology made, and I'm happy to invite Frank up if he wants to speak more about it, but Recology opted to increase the rates knowing we hadn't brought it to council yet. Now, in hindsight, the 4.29% was justified after review. And then the street sweeping overallocations from 2016 were calculated and adjusted, which is related in a way. But that is the chain of communication and what was communicated from Recology at that time.
Okay.
And, and just to be clear, if, let's say they didn't do that, and then we came back at this point in time and the 4.29% was justified, they would be billing for that previous year, that difference in that cost to all of our ratepayers.
So we'd be looking at potentially 13% then?
We would definitely be looking at 13% and making up for that year of 4.29% if they didn't do it back in July 1 of '24. And I think what the former general manager was saying is, look, we're going to do this now. If after the audit, we're off, it should have been 4% or if it should have been 5%, then they would have shored that up with each of the ratepayers for that difference. But it turns out that it was 4.29, so that wasn't necessary.
Okay. So, thank you. Because, you know, seeing that, like, oh, it wasn't approved by council at the time, but they went and implemented it. You can see where there might be some acrimony in my face if that's showing. But that aside, I, I think you highlighted some of the, some of the cause for the increase in 25, 26. Because going from 4.29 and then to just over 9%, that's a little over two times the amount for the next fiscal year. And so was it predominantly the wage increases that we saw for the labor force or what was going on there? Because, yeah, 23%.
It, it really is the cost being charged by the folks that are handling the materials. So a quarter from HWMA, another quarter for the labor costs. And then the, the margin is 30%, but as we shared, we've got that number down in the new franchise. So we're pretty excited to present that to you in a few months. But yeah, this breakdown really kind of tells you how we get there. Yeah. So let me know if you have more questions looking at that.
And, and I believe the rate, and I'm not sure about unions and, and the truck drivers and stuff like that, but the rate that was being paid to a truck driver for Recology was shockingly low. I believe it was $20 an hour or something like that, or 21. Their new negotiations resulted in a more livable wage. I think it was 26 or something like that. So that's where that 23%.
Well, yeah, you're not going to have me boo the union for getting some working-class folks a better wage. So thank you for that. At least I'm happier to know that, you know, the, the fee increase is going to go towards.
Right.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Anything further? Councilmember Conjero Stiloch?
The slide about the overage or whatever of about 114,000 that was for street sweeping, can you explain that piece to me again? Or I'm sorry, oh, 119. Well, I knew there was four in there somewhere. Can, can you explain this to me again? Because for some reason I didn't understand how this went together with everything else.
Sure, absolutely. So upon review of the 25, 26 rate application, it was found that how much Recology charged us to dispose of what the street sweepers collected was more than it should have been. And that prompted us to go back to all the rate applications since 2016 to double-check that didn't happen before. And it did a little bit each year. What Recology has communicated, it was a historical clerical error that has now been addressed and fixed moving forward. But because that totaled 119,000 over allocated, that is now removed from this year's rates. So however much Recology needs this upcoming year to operate, they've reduced that by 119,000 to credit everybody for that overcharge.
So the black, the last sentence, this has reduced 25, 26 rate by 1.18%, resulting in a rate increase of 9.46. So the rate would have been above 11%?
It would have been amid 10%, yeah, so.
What is it?
10.6% is what it would have been if we didn't receive that reduction.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I, I struggle with this. I mean, our, our costs, you know, cost of living for everything is going up and pretty dramatically. And I'm just wondering, you know, when it comes to recycling, like, the more efficient we get, you'd think the cost would improve. And yet it doesn't. It, you know, goes up pretty demonstrably. And then I think about total cost for, you know, curbside, and I get it. I mean, fuel, trucking, you know, taking to a landfill hundreds of miles away, that costs money. But at what point do we get to that people just say, forget it? I'm, I'm opting out and I'm dumping in the woods, you know, like I, I'm concerned about that. And I'm wondering if we have numbers, like, how much are Eureka staff picking up trash because somebody dumps their, their couch in the woods, you know?
We have mandatory garbage and recycling collection, so it is mandatory.
Yeah.
So there's no opting out unless they have a recyclers exclusion. I will say, you know, from the recycling standpoint, you know, when we first got into franchise hauling of recyclables and we did curbside, we were receiving revenue. We were getting $8 a ton for recyclables and having somebody from Willets come up here and pick it up. Obviously, the market crashed and at that point in time was about when Recology kind of took over. It was a little bit after that, but that's when you started paying a price per ton in order to do recycling. Now, if that market changes, we'll see the benefits of that. One of the things that we've talked about with Recology in order to realize some efficiencies, and I'm not saying this is going to be, result in a reduction of rates, but it will definitely offset costs for future rate increases, is we have alley pickup. When we started this program and made it mandatory, we did that not necessarily for efficiency, but just for practical reasons for certain parts of the, of, of the city for them to have alley pickup. We have had discussions about changing that and making everything in the front of the house. Obviously, there's going to be certain instances where there's not there, but to make it more consistent. Because what happened when we did that, we were worried about alley wear and tear. That factors into this as well. And so that's why in the alley pickups, we have recycling on one side and garbage on the other, so that you don't have a truck, because you have two separate trucks picking up, you don't have a truck going up and down that alley twice to get recycling and up and down that alley twice to get garbage. I think there can be some efficiencies if we get away from that alley pickup and the, everything's out on the curb, your, your, your route should become more efficient. And there could be a way of realizing some cost savings through that.
All right. Thank you.
Adjacent to that, I was just kind of wondering, speaking of recycling, is there anywhere in the county where people can get the full California redemptive value back with their? Where?
Hambro as well as the Safeway.
Yeah, but Hambro opened a Eureka location at Redwood Acres.
And they can get the full California redemption value there? Okay. And then for when people are dumping, or excuse me, when they're just choosing to recycle all of that stuff and they're recycling it like I do. Does somebody, I, I'm curious, on the other end, if the people that are picking it up, are they able to do anything with it and redeem anything from that?
Recology gets CRV as well. CRV, I don't want to get into this kind of, CRV is a really bad program.
Yeah, I know.
It's been sucking wind for a very long time. But yes, they, they get CRV as well.
I know that was a segue. I won't go any further on that. I was just curious. Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. I know you said that this was an extensive review conducted by a certified public accountant, and I'm just curious how often that may be the case with any of the vendors that we have.
Well, with regards to the Recology franchise, Chris Bell came on with us a few years ago. And he is also helping with the new franchise agreement and getting a lot of data in those negotiations for the new programs. Our intent would certainly be to keep using him as necessary in the years to come. But our hope is that once we establish a really solid rate review process, that staff will be able to analyze the data. But we aren't quite there yet with kind of, I've been saying we're having like a renaissance in this process and diving deeper than anyone ever has. So we'll definitely intend to use his services once a year for the rate review, should we require it.
And as it relates to other agreements, solid waste and recycling is really unique. We do have franchise agreements with, you know, PG&E, we have franchise agreements with our cable company. Totally different ballgame, not very hard to compare apples to apples in that. There's a law called Divka and regulates franchise agreements related to cable. And it's very convoluted and very well-defined. And in my opinion is not in the best interest of our ratepayers. This is a much better way of going about it, our ability to perform these audits. Once again, community services staff is in a really good job. I used to run this program for years. We didn't have the resources, nor did we ever do a true audit. We relied upon Recology to do that audit. And so this has really been beneficial.
Okay, I guess maybe it's more to the point of what was the impetus for this? Because I don't think we were throwing darts at a board saying, oh, we're going to have an audit for waste management. No, it's.
I think it was the newness of them taking over to get, be able to come familiar with it and hire a professional in order to get them familiar with it. But I also think that it had a lot to do with us knowing that we're coming up with a whole new program. When we did mandatory recycling, it resulted in all new routes, all new bins, all those things. And we see organics coming up, we're going to be in that same mode. And that's another way that people can look at this. When we did, we had mandatory garbage and we did mandatory recycling. The thought process being with recycling, which organics won't make as much of a difference. But if you can recycle appropriately and recycle those things that are all recyclable, you may have a 30 gallon can before you did that. But if you're recycling, you're going to be getting, you know, a recycling bin. You can go from a 30 to a 20 and potentially lower your rates. Now, it's going to be different now because there's going to be an associated cost with the organics. That's going to be above beyond garbage. We don't, in our rates, we don't charge for recycling. We charge for the size of the can. Now, we get billed for that and our rates are based on that. But the idea is that the more you recycle, the less you have going to the landfill and you can lower the size of your bin.
Thank you.
Anything further? I do have one question. So I don't recall when this first mandated trash, it happened. I know Jeff Leonard, there were a lot of different people on council at that time. Was there ever an opportunity for community members to opt out?
Yeah, that program was created at that time and still runs every year. It's called the Recycler's Exclusion and it's based off the parameters that you don't generate a lot of trash in the first place, that you're diverting almost all of your waste to recycling or composting. So we have about 170 folks roughly on the program each year. And they submit an affidavit basically saying, I generate less than seven pounds or gallons of trash per week. And then they are approved on that affidavit. So it's really to reward the folks who have little to no waste and not requiring them to have a service that they really don't even need. Unfortunately, if you do generate more trash than that, you are deemed as requiring the service. And that's per the city code.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about people who maybe put their can out twice a month, but are being charged for four times a month.
Sure.
Or maybe that type of situation. So there is something that is available. And then how is that vetted?
It's a form they fill out and as long as they report under that threshold, they are approved, barring any nuisance reports later, which historically would never have happened.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, if nothing further, we will open this public hearing. Is there anyone from the public here to comment? Hello?
Hi, Deborah Dukes, very happy Recology customer whose bins are picked up in her alley. I would hate to see that go away, but on a similar note, the street sweeping is something that has been a pet peeve of mine for a long time. Because there are motorhomes, there are boats, there are defunct vehicles living in front of houses in my neighborhood that have been there for years. And you worry about maintaining the alleys. Nothing under those vehicles ever gets swept and you've got redwood forests coming up through cracks in the pavement. I don't know how much waste is generated by the street sweeping, but there's a whole lot that's never swept up. I've lived in Eureka for 46 years, so I don't have recent experience with other cities. But every city I lived in before I got here, you had to move your car or other vehicles, you know, so that they could sweep on your side of the street. And here, the street sweepers go down the middle of the street and I'm sure they're getting some stuff. And in places where there are lots of, where there's off-street parking and the people actually park off-street, the streets look great. I'm all for it. But I don't understand why we're paying so much for street sweeping that gets just some of the streets. So that's just my pet peeve. But that said, I love having my trash picked up. I too put all my CRV in the recycling, hoping that it's offsetting my bill a little bit. And I too generate very little trash, very little recycling. And I would love to know more about the opting out because I put cans out maybe once every six weeks. So, but I'm still willing to pay to keep everybody else's bills down. Anyway, get rid of the street sweepers or make people move their cars and keep the alley pickup.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one bring it to Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion. And then comments? Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, I'll move that we hold a public hearing and adopt resolution, adopt a resolution approving, approving an increase of 9.46% in the rates for solid waste collection and an increase in the green waste fee by 94 cents by Recology Humboldt County effective July 1, 2025. And approving an increase of 4.29% in the rates for solid waste collection and a decrease in the green waste fee by point, or sorry, 94 cents by Recology Humboldt County effective July 1, 2024.
I'll second. Great, so we have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments?
Sorry.
Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, I, you know, for sure, I know that we need to pay, you know, pay for these services. And I do appreciate that the, you know, the increases are going to support people's salaries and effective services. I would like to see on the bill some statement that kind of explains what the rate increases are for. Because I think that it's easy for people to get angry when they see, you know, and for sure, you know, having a reason, you know, doesn't always help to be like, great, someone's getting paid more. But I do think it generally, it helps people to have a better understanding that, you know, this is going back into support the wellbeing of people who live and work in our communities. I'm sure that folks at HWMA know this, but, you know, I do think it's worth starting to look at the excess green waste that's going to Anderson, you know, and I do look forward to implementing the compost. But I don't like that we're shipping green waste so far out of, away from here. And so I'd like to see us, you know, look for some more local solutions to that. There's a lot of, you know, it seems like also a potential business opportunity for someone if someone's not able, you know, if we don't have it all. So I, you know, I don't know what we can do to support that. And yeah, thank you for all of your work on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, no, I agree with Councilmember Castellano in the sense that it's completely asinine that we have to ship our green waste in order to be environmentally sound. And I know that's something that we're not here to talk about today. But again, echoing at least that sentiment, I would very much appreciate if Recology could put at least on the next bill outgoing that there is going to be an increase, you know, that way it's not just coming from the city. We already get enough phone calls, but I would like that to go out to at least prepare folks and have an understanding of where the wage increase, or sorry, not wage increases, but where the increase is coming from and how, so.
And I think Frank could nod his head, but if the billing is still the same, they do have a section on their bills where they can put some verbiage related to that on there. Correct, Frank.
Anything further? Councilmember Conchaire Stilich?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the sentiment. I do wish we had some kind of common sense exemptions for things where we're in the, you know, pursuit of making something better, actually making it worse, you know, transporting stuff, for example. And I agree with Councilmember Fernandez, you know, this is, was a much-needed pay raise. So, you know, that's a different kind of situation, you know, and I don't know if there is, I don't know if it was Councilmember Castellano that suggested informing the public of that. I agree. I think oftentimes it is helpful for people to know where things are going and it not being in the fine print, I think is important. Because, yeah, that having been said, I hate, you guys know, voting for increases. It bothers me because people are hurting so much. The stuff is, the costs of everything are outpacing everybody on everything. And so just, you know, I hope everybody will be trying to find places to cut corners, trying to kind of slow things as much as possible. Keeping in mind, I am curious going forward if there's been a measurement of how many people are falling into arrears on these accounts. And if you've seen an increase in that, that would be something I would be curious about, but for another time. Yeah, and, oh, I don't know who brought it up. I don't think she's here. Oh, you are still here. If a car's just been parked for a really long time, it's just abandoned out in front of there, you actually can call the community service officers. They come out and tag it and they can take it. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
You got it.
And in relation to the, you just brought up prior to that, the.
The number of accounts in arrears.
The number of accounts that are in delinquency. When I first started this program and we were doing the special assessments, we were in the 600, 700 range. It's actually decreased. I think we were two something this year.
It was about 200,000 we brought to you and since then?
No, 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 number of properties.
The number, oh gosh, I think in dollars, not numbers of people. I'm sorry.
It's dropped significantly. I don't know over the last recent year, but compared to 10, compared to.
Really?
Six, seven years ago, yes, it's dropped a lot. And I think a lot of that has to do with, we just implemented the special assessments when it started happening. There were a lot of folks that we see the same property over and over again. And it's not necessarily because it's a financial issue. I think that some folks are of the understanding or have the belief that they can write it off as their property taxes, which I'm not a tax accountant, but that could be questionable. But there are a lot of repeat folks that do this as a way, because we don't charge a significant amount above and beyond. We don't treat it like abatements and add a 20% cost to those liens.
So even with increase in rates, you've seen less people falling behind.
We've had increase in rates. I think the last time we had no increase was maybe eight, nine years ago. But we've consistently have annually, just because of cost of living, rate increases every year. This is a significant one, don't get me wrong, but we typically have rate increases throughout the agreement.
Well, I don't want to belabor it, but now I'm really curious, so.
Well, I know when we had done the, what was it, the special assessment, the accounts that were in arrears, when we did it last year and when we did it this year, there were actually less this year. But there were a few of those outlier accounts that were significantly higher than the mid-range, so.
Thank you, and we will, please vote. I'm sorry, the time for the public comment's over.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Moltz and absent, motion carries.
Thank you, and that moves us to our third public hearing, accessory dwelling unit. An SB 9 inland zoning code with Director Kenyon.
Hello, good evening, council. The city is proposing to amend the inland zoning code, which is Eureka Municipal Code, Chapter 155, which applies to the portion of the city of Eureka that is outside or inland of our coastal zone. The amendment will make updates to regulations for accessory dwelling units, residential zoning districts and urban lot split subdivisions. Before I speak more about the regulatory changes, I just want to take a moment to explain what SB 9 is. Senate Bill 9 went into effect January 1, 2023. It requires cities to allow up to two primary homes, either attached or detached, on any lot zoned for single-family use, which in Eureka, that's our R1 zoning district. This essentially means the city must allow at least a duplex on each R1 lot in addition to accessory dwelling units allowed by state law up to a total of four units. Senate Bill 9 also amended the Subdivision MAP Act to require cities to administratively approve lot splits in single-family zones. Under Eureka's current R1 zoning, the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet. However, SB 9 allows qualifying R1 lots to be split into two parcels of roughly equal size, as small as 1,200 square feet each. However, SB 9 lot splits include a key restriction. The property owner must sign an affidavit that they will live on one of the new parcels as their principal residence for at least three years. This rule ensures that SB 9 is used by a homeowner one time, not leveraged by developers. We incorporated SB 9 into our code in 2023. Now we are adding more of its verbiage to ensure we are fully covering all of its provisions. The impetus for this code update, the city last updated its accessory dwelling unit regulations in October of 2023. And since then, there have been some major updates to state ADU law, sorry, accessory dwelling unit. I say ADU, sorry for the acronym, prompting the state Housing and Community Development Department to email us and let us know that our regulations are null and void unless we update them consistent with current state ADU law. So amendments to the ADU regulations, which are in 155316, also required corresponding changes to our residential zoning standards, 204. Since we had to modify 204, we decided to make additional edits to the development standards tables to clean them up. And then that in turn led to our review of SB 9 provisions and realized we were missing some relevant provisions, both in that section and in 155.332, where we talk about urban lot splits. So that's the reasoning for all the changes. They're really all just meant to align with state law or clean up our code. And just wanting to highlight a few of the key changes required or optional that have been added in response to state law. Now, we have to require up to eight detached accessory dwelling units where there is an existing multifamily development, as long as the number of ADUs doesn't exceed the number of existing units. Also, state ADU law now says local governments cannot require the replacement of covered or uncovered parking lost to make room for an ADU. Previously, there was only a prohibition on requiring replacement of covered parking. And state ADU law now has extremely lenient amnesty provisions for unpermitted ADUs constructed before January 1, 2020. If someone with an illegal ADU comes in to get the necessary building permit to legalize the unit, the city must approve the unit, even if it isn't consistent with the city's zoning and building standards, as long as the building official does not deem the unit substandard pursuant to Health and Safety Code 17920.3. And we have a list up on our website spelling out what it means to be substandard, in case anybody's interested. And then, oh yeah, I just said that. Okay, and the last thing, big, big change is that state ADU law now allows primary dwelling units and ADUs to be sold separately as condominiums. Unlike the other provisions I just discussed, this condo provision is optional and staff is recommended, we include it by reference. So the Planning Commission voted 3-0 to recommend city council approval on July 9. Tonight is the introduction. If it gets introduced, the vote on adoption would probably be the. Tonight is the introduction. If it gets introduced, the vote on adoptions would probably be the next meeting. And the required findings for zoning code amendments are consistency with the general plan, internal consistency with other provisions of the code, and not being detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience or welfare. In terms of public interest, I wanted to just show the slide really quick. This is showing housing units where we've approved a building permit each year and total units and then total ADUs. And you can see that a lot of our units are accessory dwelling units. That and, you know, this is one of the places we're actually seeing some movement on housing in the city. So we had a newspaper notice and we posted the hearing on the city websites and bulletin boards. And it's, this is a distress, updating our codes, a discretionary action by the city councils. So it triggers SEQA. But there are carve outs in SEQA for updating city ordinances to implement state ADU and SB nine law. So here's the motion when you're ready.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you for that. I did have a question, excuse me, about the splitting of dwelling units and selling them separately. Wouldn't ever acquire a lot line adjustment of some sort and would that, or is that exempt from SEQA as well, that part of the development?
It's this, it's condos, our condoization is this weird part of subdivision law where it's not like a typical standard subdivision. But yeah, we would record the individual spaces and then their common space. There's, it's not, yeah, it's a separate thing, but yeah, it would get recorded. But there's no like hearing or notice involved with condos.
You would have to split the property though still, right?
With, yeah, like there, we have a variety of properties in Eureka that have condos. For instance, most recently, you know, the Weat Cultural Center next to the gazebo, they actually condoize that building. So there's like portions of it that are separately owned, and then there's portions of it that are communally owned. So with condos, you can, you can divide properties differently than a standard subdivision.
You know, creating some conflict between the various owners. I just, just commenting on that. It seems kind of odd.
Doesn't it not require like CCNRs or some, or HOA or something like that as a part of that? No?
They have common interest space. So like waterfront, where that we have the sushi slash, that's a condo. And so like the parking and like utilities are all jointly owned. Attorney Black might have more info on condo law. I've never had to process a condo subdivision. They aren't popular currently. Used to be much more and I've been sent articles that it's about what insurance is required and making them not popular.
What I do know about them is they're complicated. Well, and you have to have a way of governing them. You have to insure them as a, you know. And so I don't know. I doubt this part of the law is going to be popular, but the other parts, some of it, you know, sounds pretty attractive. There's a question about if your property is eligible to have an ADU, or maybe you already have an ADU. I don't believe that that's a conflict of interest because the zoning changes that you're discussing apply across the board to pretty much everybody in a very wide variety of situations. But it's basically all about R1 zoning, which applies to a lot of citizens. And so you're, you're basically taking a vote that affects a very wide variety of people, not just yourself. So.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Let's see. I'm curious, this is a little tangential to this, but it's something that I think would support it. How's, how are things going with the ADU financing program that we've been working on?
So we're in the process of discussing it with an attorney where we have a draft request for proposals for design professionals. We have worked through the, not only the financing portion of it, but worked with a local bank that will work with us to refinance after the property is built, so we can keep that revolving fund from the trust fund. We're hoping to bring something back to council with the RFP within the next couple of months for that. And then from the construction side of it and speaking with the attorney, we're looking at a checklist for contractors that are eligible for building these units as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Director Kenyon, you touched on the, the only phrase I can think of though is grandfathering in the older ADUs, ones that hadn't been permitted. And I'm sure there's still a level of habitability that has to be reviewed. Someone can't just have four tough sheds together and be like, oh, I've had these for a while now.
That's the checklist on our website. That's the minimum requirements. You know, you're going to have to have a window in a bedroom. You know, we have to make sure people are going to be safe and not, it's not gonna.
You don't just show up at city hall, get the permit. There's still a process to it.
Yeah, but we aren't, we're not allowed to punish people or we're just like, if it isn't meeting minimum health and safety standards, we have to give them a list and let them fix it and work with them to get it permitted.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
What is our current minimum lot size in the city?
It depends on the zoning district. So the R1 is 5,000 square feet. And then the R2 and R3 is 2400. But there is another state law that I'm still learning about that, like will allow people to subdivide further if they then like construct a home on each of the tiny lots and sell them off. So it's going to allow, and it's going to apply to multifamily, R2 and R3. So it's going to help us get smaller allowance for smaller lot, like significantly smaller. And that was just updated with when the state budget was adopted and the governor included these. So I'm hoping to bring that to you soon too.
Okay. I know you guys know, I know you and Miles, and I was going to ask this to be a future agenda item. Interestingly, it's on my list for tonight, was to ask about us reducing our minimum lot sizes.
Yeah. And the tricky part to do that separate from something that's mandated by state law is that our general plan has provisions for maximum density in different districts. And then we had to adopt a general plan EIR, which was environmental impact report under SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, which was hundreds of thousands of dollars to like analyze the impacts of that growth. So if we change the densities in the general plan, we have to amend that environmental impact report. But I'm realizing we're going to have to anyway, because of the regional housing needs allocation that's coming in for 2019 through 2035. We're looking at somewhere around 1,700 new units that we have to accommodate. And our general plan, we thought we were being conservative based on how much development we've been getting in Eureka. We were like by 2040, from 2018, when we adopted it to 2040, we analyzed the impact of about 1,800 new units total. So we're going to have to open it up anyway. So I, it is an opportunity to rethink our maximum densities and minimum lot sizes.
Can I clarify? What was the thing that you said they have to live on one side for three years?
That's the urban lot split under SB nine, and that applies in the R1 zone. Now people can do a lot split to divide their lot into two. And they can get below the 5,000 square foot minimum. They can go down to 20 to 1,200 square feet. But they have to be roughly equal size. It has to be 60, 40 to 50, 50. You can't have, you can't just carve off a little piece. And then you have to live, you have to sign a thing saying you're going to live on one side for three years after you do it. And that has not been popular. That, like I said, was adopted in 2023 and it has not moved the way that ADUs have.
So, sorry, when you, earlier when you were talking about condos and the change of how, is that going to apply? Could that apply to multi-unit things that are currently being used as rentals? Can those be changed and turned like adapted so that they can be sold rather than just rented?
Yeah. Yeah. You can already, our subdivision provisions under the subdivision map act already allow condos, condo, taking your multifamily rental apartment complex and turning it into condos.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay. And then you said something that you guys are grandfathering the old ADUs.
Per state law, if somebody has an illegal ADU and they've been, they've had it since 2020, we have to, they can come in to legalize it. We have to approve it, even if it doesn't meet the minimum setback requirement of the zoning code from the property line, or if it doesn't meet some building code thing that doesn't have to do with like minimum health and safety requirements.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I know we talk about R1 zoning quite a bit and looking through the document further, I noticed that we do reference RE, residential real estate.
Oh yeah, residential estate. We have no residential estate.
That's what I was going to ask.
Inland zone. We have a little bit in the coastal zone up on Indianola, you know, where Sora Leaf Healing Center is going in. That's residential estate.
Okay. And I understand we have to have it in there to be compliant with the state. I was just curious like how much, if any, we had and if there'd been any ADUs placed, but it sounds like.
No. We are so built out. That's the, Indianola is the only place where like we don't really have the water sewer connection. So we, we're like, yeah, you can stay really large lot out there because they're not on our sewer.
All right. Thank you.
Anything further? So we will open this public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers who wants to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll move it over to Zoom. Do you see anyone?
I see no one on Zoom.
So we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion and comments. Councilmember Bauer?
No, I think, I appreciate the presentation. I mean, it's a pretty hefty document that we're talking about the changes. And I think we're all pretty supportive of making it as easy as possible to build in our city. Being built out, it's a challenge. So I'm happy to support this and I'll make a motion to hold a public hearing and find the project exempt from, oh, there it is. I move the city council way full reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 1049 dash CS and ordinance of the city of Eureka, amending Eureka municipal code title 15, chapter 155, the inland zoning code. Subsection 155.204, residential zoning districts, 155.316, accessory dwelling units, and 155.332.040, urban lot split subdivision, consistent with current state law.
Second. If we have a motion in a second, are there any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Moulton absent. Motion carries.
Great. Bringing us to the consent calendar. Notice to the public, all matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion pursuant to city council resolution 2011 dash 22. If a member of the public would like an item of the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. So I don't have anything to be pulled except for F3, which has been pulled and not discussed, and I haven't heard anything from anyone.
I move consent minus F3.
Second.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Moulton absent. Motion carries.
Great. This moves us to legislative action correspondence. So do we have anything under legislative? Okay. Great. Moving us to ordinances and resolutions, amendment to Eureka municipal code, section 150, 105 dash 121 for live work occupation with Chief Building Official Riley. Welcome.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. I have a couple of municipal code updates. One is to the live work section, excuse me, and the other is to the abandoned and derelict shopping carts. I'll start off with live work. So I was doing some casual reading of the municipal code and I noticed that the live work section was citing the UBC and numerous places and then some, the portions of the UBC that don't pertain to anything anymore. So we updated the language to reflect the CBC, which is the California building code. This is more a housekeeping thing. There are no substantive changes to anything. And so I think we have to do these separately. Okay. So then I have a suggested motion up here for this one.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any questions for Chief Building Official Riley? Councilmember? Great. Okay. So with that, we will open up public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it over to Zoom. Do you see anyone?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay. So we'll bring it back to council for a motion and comments. Councilmember Fernandez?
I'll move the city council way full reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 1047 CS and ordinance of the city of Eureka, amending Eureka municipal code title 15, chapter 150, section 150.105 dash 121, pertaining to live work occupancies.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Are there any comments? Councilmember Castellano?
Thanks. Someone who works frequently with artists and artisans. I'm excited to see this on our agenda. I'm curious. You know, like how, I do have a question, I guess is what I want to confess. I'm curious, you know, is there a way that, I don't know that a lot of people know that they can have live work occupancies in Eureka. Is there a way that we could be sharing this and/or are there sites that you see that might be good fits for live work types of occupancies?
I'm not sure how it works with our other, the zoning standards, but I mean, places like in Old Town, it seems like in some of those older warehouse buildings that are kind of unoccupied now might be a good, this seems like something that was more popular in the Bay Area, for whatever reason in the past. And I haven't, since I've been here, I haven't seen anything come through for a live work situation. And I haven't heard of anything. I've never designed one. I think it's kind of an outdated thing at this point in time, but.
I will say that when Director Kenyon brings back the local coastal program and some of the zoning changes in the, in the local coastal zone, that this will be a topic of conversation and discussing. And as Chief Building Official Riley is stating, you know, the zoning is probably going to be the issue when you talk about those warehouse spaces. But the idea is for us to propose to the coastal commission and hopefully they certify it. It's to allow for these type of uses, not only in waterfront commercial service, commercial, those type of zoning districts, but also industrial and other zoning districts as well.
I've brought it up before and we wrote a letter of support. I've, I've brought it up before, and we, and we wrote a letter of support, uh, for this legislation, you know, there's some legislation passed last, I think maybe the year before, related to, um, in cities with cultural arts districts allowing the designation of artist housing. So I'm, you know, curious if maybe this might potentially play out in some of our future planning around live work housing and some of these, it would be, I think, personally, you know, a great use of some of these spaces, um, within the cultural arts district, and potentially supporting the cultural arts district, so thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you. And if we have nothing further, please vote.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries.
Which moves us to amendment to municipal code, Chapter 130 dash 30, for abandoned and derelict shopping carts.
Okay, so, the shopping carts. Uh, first, I wanted to update, um, everyone on the current policy. Um, I have some pictures of shopping carts. So, as it stands right now, um, the carts are either immediately taken to the dump, or they are taken down to our corp yard, and then eventually they're put in a dumpster, um, and taken to the scrapyard. An abandoned cart, an abandoned cart fee is in place with the current policy, but from a practical perspective, we don't get around to actually charging the fees. Um, just because of the number of people that are grabbing them and dropping them off at the corp yard, it, it's just a mess to keep track of, and we don't have a good system in place. Many carts do end up being returned to the businesses that they came from, um, but the municipal code, as it stands now, doesn't allow expressly for us to charge a fee if we return the cart to where, um, to the business that they came from. We are only allowed to charge if we dispose of them. And right now, like I said, there's a multitude of departments that are grabbing these things. There's PD, Streets, Harbor, uh, Code Enforcement, the Park Division, Miles has probably grabbed one. I mean, everybody's working to get these things out of the public view. Our new policy that we've been working on, um, we have developed some tags that we're going to zip tie to the carts, and then take a picture of the tagged carts, and then we're going to upload that to our GIS system, and it'll allow us to keep a paper trail and be transparent, and be able to account for what we will be, uh, billing businesses for. Um, carts that aren't soil to damage will be returned to the home businesses, and we just don't want to be dumping things that don't need to go to the dump, but that's just, you know, it's wasteful. And then, obviously, the storage of the carts is an issue, and we've had trouble down at the corp yard just because there's so many of them. By the time, you know, nobody knows who's supposed to put them in the dumpster, um, it just, it leads to conflict down there, and then actually now, uh, the corp yard is asked us to stop taking them there, so we're kind of in between at this point. Um, and then the fees will be calculated and sent to businesses at the end of each month. And then additional fines can be levied, levied against businesses that are the repeat offenders. It starts at $50 per incident, which is not per cart, it's per however many we find in one spot, and then it can escalate from there. Um, and then I just wanted to say thanks to Matt Morgan and Maggie Martinez for coming up with the GIS system, which I will show you on the next slide. It allows us to log in where we find them, the date and time, um, the number of carts, and then if there's garbage in the carts, and then we can take a picture and upload it, that way we have a record. If there's some kind of dispute later on, um, we kind of have a paper trail, which helps us to enforce this. So the only change to the ordinance is to add a provision that the fees for collecting the abandoned carts can be charged whether we return them to the business or we dispose of them. Um, and then I have a suggested motion here below.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I guess my question, it seems like you got property that has value, and, and businesses, is the value of the cart not worth, you know, going and retrieving them, or having a security system, like a locking wheel? Why does this keep happening?
So, I wish I could answer that. So, there's state law that requires the locking wheels, I believe, and I think we might even have something like that on the books, too. In the past, we've tried to reach out to these businesses and say, hey, can you hire someone to pick these up? For whatever reason, I think, for the, the problems that we have are with the, the big out-of-town corporations, and they just, it seems to be a cost of doing business, and they just don't seem to care. So lately, it, we've been really noticing an uptick. I think enforcement kind of fell off a little bit with the changing of the department, so we're trying to, to come back and try one more push and say, hey, can we get a handle on this? And hopefully we can get through to those businesses. Whether or not it's going to work, I'm not sure, but at least we'll have a way to recuperate staff's time for having to deal with all of these carts.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, with, with the need for, for identifying shopping carts, uh, and having the locking mechanism, what's the average cost for just one shopping cart?
So, from what I've heard, um, it's somewhere around $150. So, the fee we charge is less than replacement, so it seems reasonable. Um, it, it's just, I, for whatever reason, it doesn't seem to be making a dent.
Right, and that's what I was trying to figure out, because, yeah, let's just say, average, then it's about $150, you want to make sure it has the locking device, et cetera. And, and so then at the moment, it's, we, we only charge if it's being disposed of, and so we keep it, I'm sorry, where do we keep it again?
The carts themselves?
Yeah.
They're, they were being brought down to the corp yard. At this point, they're going straight to the dump unless they need to be, if there's, if people have possessions in the carts, we have to keep them for the statutory time. Um, so they'll be brought down to the corp yard, or EPD will keep them, and then they'll go directly to the dump.
And, and it would just be like, we would give a phone call, we'd send an email, like, hey, you have some carts down here, you have a cart.
Uh, well, we've reached out to the businesses themselves and told them where they were, but for the business, i- if they have uh, someone's personal property in them, we will keep them.
Yeah.
But we don't have to keep them for, on behalf of the business, we can just dump them directly, if they're abandoned.
And, and then going to that, um, we have to keep the cart, if it has personal effects in it, for the mandated amount of time, and so I'm curious then, how does one go about proving, hey, those are mine, if there isn't an ID or anything of those sorts in there?
I'm not sure. I think EPD might handle that part. I don't, it's.
Yeah, EPD tracks it, um, location where it's at, um, you know, if there's no identifying information that is on there, I would assume that, um, and I don't believe, yeah, Chief is there. I would assume that that would be, somebody comes in, hey, I left this cart at the foot of Vigo Street so many days ago, and that would be a way of trying to identify if that person is the, the owner of that.
Okay.
I don't think that we get very much follow-up, whether it's carts or encampment stuff. We typically store it for the 90 days, and we don't typically see people coming. As a matter of fact, like when we did Palco Marsh, we had, I believe, three full Conex boxes full of belongings, and I don't believe we got a single person.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that there's a concise and understandable process to it, and, so, okay. Uh, that's all I have at the moment.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
So I had read the previous one, or the one that was passed in 2021 by the previous council, and then this one, and it looked like the only change was under F, and it was 13 words, that was just that addition of that one.
It was literally just to add the provision that we could bring them back to the business and still charge the fee.
Okay, and so I guess if this allows us to take them back to the business, this, this is probably not going to have any measurable impact on how many of them we're seeing everywhere.
Well, so we're going to ramp up enforcement, but I wanted to add this, it, so, what happens is when we see these out and about, it's easier for us to grab them, throw them in the back of the truck, and then take it, usually the business is closer than the dump, and then we don't have to wait in line at the dump, and then go through that whole process. We can just pick them up and drop them off at the business, and then with our new tracking system, it'll allow us to keep track of all that, and then bill at the end of the month. It should just make things more efficient.
I, I have a, can I ask a follow-up? I have a legal question, and so this might be maybe either for the Chief or for Attorney Black. Is there any other scenarios under which we charge people for the return of the theft of their, uh, stolen property?
I'm not sure.
Um, I can't think of one, but I don't think I should be the only person thinking about that. I'm not aware of any where we charge them for the return of their stolen property.
Right, because I mean, they're not leaving, the, the, presumably the businesses themselves are not the ones leaving the shopping carts everywhere.
No, but there are, there's state law that they're responsible for their carts, so this is kind of a different situation.
Exactly, and so when he's referring to that, and I believe it is, and we have an ordinance related to that, too, it is the responsibility of them to make sure that they track and keep them on their property, and so, um, when we did this, there was a legal review as to whether the, this was legal, and obviously, that review at the time was clear that it was legal. Um, but yeah, there's, this is different in the sense that there is a requirement for them to maintain, because they come a, a public nuisance.
I mean, certainly, if somebody stole a bunch of stuff out of my house, which has happened, and then sprinkled it all over the road, which has happened, um, it would be a nuisance, arguably.
And if, you know, if it's a stolen car, if someone steals your car, and then it's parked somewhere illegally, and it, and ends, ends up getting towed, I think you'd still be, you know.
Is that true? You get charged the impound costs and everything for your car if your car is stolen? That's an incredible eye-popping. I, I don't even, we're, we're uncovering a little pile of worms here that I did.
I think that example's a little different, because it's usually, um, there's usually a private party involved in towing and storing your vehicle, and so they have to be compensated in some way. Um, I think the, kind of the issue with shopping carts is the, the, uh, businesses
Wild.
are not taking sufficient responsibility, and I think that's what we've heard. Um, for example, aggressively acquiring and maintaining these locking wheel, um, type units would be a significant discouragement to people trying to take them off-site, and, but the, you know, the, the grocery stores don't sufficiently, um, enforce that. They don't go out and gather, gather their carts, and so I think that's a, that's a reason why they get charged.
I appreciate that. Is the intention with this, then, and I guess going back to 2021 as well, since this is virtually identical, is the intention with this to increase enforcement on the businesses that are being stolen from, or to increase enforcement on those that are stealing from them?
It's 100% the businesses.
This is to increase enforcement on the businesses?
Yes.
Well, in some, some places will refresh their fleet of carts, and then leave their old carts, you know, outside of the business where they're very easily taken and distributed out into the greenbelt area.
Yeah, we, we just have, sorry, this is Director Canyon, I just want to add, we just have some, some bad actors, uh, in businesses that really don't care about their property getting stolen, and, you know, when we used to collect them at the corp yard, Matt Morgan, our Code Enforcement, uh, manager, he said he would call all of them, and some of them, like Eureka Natural Foods, would be like, oh yeah, I want that cart, I'll come get it from you, and would come pick it up, and there's other ones where the majority of our carts come from. The majority of them are from just a few of these businesses, and those few businesses, we'd call the manager, and they'd say, okay, you have our carts, good to know, and then they never show up to collect them, and then we were responsible for dealing with them.
So under this ordinance, it looked like there's also, um, a penalty for those stealing the carts, if I read the ordinance correctly.
It allows us to levy a penalty, um, it gives us that authorization to do so.
Is that going to be pursued as well?
I think once we, I'm really excited about the tracking system, because once we track, if we can then, really, we have the data that it's just a few bad actors, then we can really, like, you know, isolate our enforcement of this.
So can, can I clarify your question? You, you think that there's a provision in this that if a community member steals, is that we can find that?
I thought there was, somewhere on like page two or three.
Finding the businesses.
No, I'm sorry. I thought somewhere in it, when I was reading it, it was saying that this was a misdemeanor, though.
Oh, correct. There is a provision in there also about.
But the misdemeanor is to the business, not to the person who stole the, 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 the item.
That's not how I read it.
There, there is a provision, there is a section in there that talks about stealing carts, and how you're not supposed to do it.
So that's why I was asking about the enforcement, because it seemed like the ordinance is written in a dual way, that it's to get rid, you know, to try to, um, discourage theft of property as well as, as you said, you know, bad actor businesses. That's why I'm asking if there's an intent to enforce both ends of that.
That provision for stealing, I mean, you steal anything, it can be a misdemeanor. If you steal something over a certain value, it could be a felony.
Right.
The majority of the carts are just, we don't find them with the person, they're just lying on the side of the road, or in the greenbelt, or, you know, it's.
They're just abandoned, they're not usually being used?
And then EPD has a different response when people are found with the carts, they have a process on the criminal side.
Yeah, and that's what I was kind of wondering, as if, I mean, I just, I, this is, I'm surprised at all of the, you know, the costs of, I almost said something politically incorrect. It's the costs of living in some places where you might be more likely to be a victim of crime. Um, so this has been enlightening. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Might, might seem a bit of an odd question that I'm not sure if anyone will have the answer to, but, uh, how many, how many businesses would this affect, then? How many businesses utilize shopping carts in Eureka?
I'm not sure how many, but I, I can say that it will probably affect a handful that are kind of our, our problem places.
Be- because again, I, I, in similar vein to Councilmember Contreras Deloche, it is one of those things where having had anything stolen, and then having to go and find it, or have to pay the impound fees, um, it's not something that I'm, I'm easily able to, to rectify in my mind, but, uh, I, I am curious then, is there any particular way? Because I know it was referred to that there are bad actors then in the business, uh, sector that won't take their carts, or just have them dumped because we're doing that anyway, and so is there any way then that these smaller businesses, whether it's ENF or any, anyone else, to, I guess I'm trying to figure out that I know that there are ways to, uh, what's the phrase I'm looking for here? Uh, to, nope, that's not what I'm looking for. Sorry, I'm trying to find the language I want to adopt here. Uh, i- i- is there a way then to reward these smaller businesses and not penalize them, but the ones in particular, the bad actors?
I, I would say that the changes to the ordinance is rewarding them, so for Eureka Natural Foods, we'll be bringing that cart back to them. They won't be having to go to the corp yard in order to pick it up. Um, so this change in the.
But they're still having to pay a fee to pick it up?
They will, it'll be tracked, yes.
Okay.
But this time they won't have to go to the, while the corp yard isn't far from ENF, they could probably walk over there, but for other businesses, that is a little bit further, they don't have to take their time, take a truck over there, put it in the back, and on top of that.
We don't see, we see, um, about three businesses' shopping carts in the majority of cases, and Eureka Natural Foods is not one of them. Most of the smaller businesses do a real good job of retrieving their own carts.
Yeah, and I think what I was, uh, trying to, trying to put together is that businesses of a certain size, so, I mean, if, if ENF, you know, given their footprint in Humboldt County compared to that of Grocery Outlet or Walgreens, or, I don't know who the bad actors are, so I'm just putting that out there, if that's a potential for consideration.
I don't know if it's necessary due to this, I don't know how you'd qualify that, because Eureka Natural Foods is a supermarket, they have a lot of carts. Um, you know, you could look at a Ross Dress for Less, and I'm sure they have less carts, but yet they're a much bigger corporation, so I don't know how we would define that.
One idea, just throwing it out there, could be like, over a certain number of carts, then we start charging the fee, you know, so like, we don't charge a fee for the first couple carts, you know, and then, um, and then we start charging it once we hit a certain quota of carts.
Okay, th- thank you for that, that's an alternative, and I'd be amenable to that.
This is kind of a well-trod area of, of dispute with some of these businesses, too. This, it's not like this is, you know, it started last week. This is ongoing for many, many, many years.
And, and it isn't just like, all big businesses are bad, there are good, uh, there are good actors, that, so I don't want to.
That's why we treat businesses like people.
So is this one opportunity also to do some cost recovery? Because it does take time for. Because it does take time for our employees to go out and pick up the carts, to deliver the carts, to store the carts, to go and handle the carts.
Fees by definition are 100% cost recovery. So the $80 is like the staff time and the tracking and the contacting the business and like everything involved, the billing.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Um, would, I I don't want to talk about any specific business, but would you say that some of the so-called bad actors are are any of them local or they tend to be kind of larger chains?
I would say like the top three that we've been referring to are not local.
Okay, so this, okay, because I think that was my concern with, I mean, besides the fact that, you know, I'm still trying to get my head around the idea of charging someone for the return of their stolen property. And I understand the staff time involved, so I get that aspect. Um, but yeah, I I also just want to be cognizant and careful of not making things more difficult for businesses that are local businesses operating locally. Like I do want to be careful about that, especially because um, they are um, all of them are complaining and dismayed at the amount of crime that they're dealing with in a variety of ways. And I'm sure, you know, granted Walgreens is a large chain, but I know the employees there, especially the one that's close to where I live um, down on Broadway is deeply frustrated at how frequently they're the victims of theft. And now everything is locked up. And they oft they have their carts regularly completely cleared out because people take them and don't return them. And then there's no carts in the store. And that's happened to them numerous times. So I just, you know, and they have specific policies that do not allow their staff to try to thwart any kind of theft of anything. And so um, anyway, I'm just thinking about all of the way that interconnects with everything.
This is like an ongoing problem in most urban areas. It's been a problem for decades. And there are systems that people can adopt to protect their carts. If they if they care enough to to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Perhaps we should bring back the shopping cart czar. Councilmember Bauer?
No, I was just gonna say, I I think you pointed that out, Director Kenyon, that you know, I think the fines should be more significant so that the solution is you put a lock on the darn wheel. Done, right? I mean, that's a cost to businesses, but the big ones that we have the problems with could easily afford that. So I don't see why this this to me seems like a great opportunity to try and make it a little more difficult, you know, hey, you got to pay some money now for our time, our staff time, for the blight. And that's you do that by issuing fees, you know, so I appreciate you um, trying to come to a solution to address a problem that affects us all, you know, but it really is up to the businesses to act responsibly in our community.
I appreciate too that you're looking for ideas to keep these things out of the landfills. I mean, I I think that's a really positive thing for our community. Uh, anything further?
Have we done public comment on this or we?
We have not.
Okay, I was just saving my comment. So, okay.
Yes, so wait, no, we did not. So I'm very tired. We'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll move to Zoom.
I see no one on Zoom.
We'll bring it back to council for a motion and comments. Councilmember Castellano?
I move to lawful reading and read by title only. Introduce bill number 1046 to CS and ordinance of the city of Eureka, Eureka municipal code title 13, chapter 130, section 130.30 pertaining to abandoned and derelict shopping carts.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any comments? Councilmember Castellano?
Just to say, I I remember when this came before council and I was frustrated at the time that there wasn't an incentive of getting this shopping carts back to local businesses. So I'm really glad that that has been. And I was trying, I was wrecking my brain trying to remember why it wasn't there at the time because I I remember it came up. And so I'm glad that we're doing it now. Um, thank you for your work on this. Um, you know, I I do think it kind of takes out that missing link of like, can't we just get them back to the business that had them? So thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, my discrepancy more lies in the vein of, again, if it's if it's the few and they may be not local or equally larger, then there's probably another way around it than to uh, penalize uh, some of the smaller businesses that may be affected by it. And so I would at least like to see if it would be considered that it can be done by uh, what is it? Um, gross gross earnings of the business or by the uh, the locality of the business where they might be based.
I think Attorney Black should say whether or not we can do it based on that.
I don't think so. But um, I can't say definitively without doing a little bit of research.
And and the reason I bring that up is I know it's possible in other municipalities to zone out certain businesses or put a threshold. And so that's kind of what I was thinking of in the terms of putting a threshold there, whether it's by earnings or by number of employees, that type of thing.
So the one area I'm familiar with that happens is Arcata and where they don't let what you would say franchise things in certain geographical locations. I don't know if we could have an ordinance that penalizes a business for being larger or have more income, but that would be something Attorney Black could look into.
Yeah, and I think there's there's two separate questions. One is you have existing businesses in place that have a vested interest in being there. And then you have the question of whether you can sort or filter businesses from different geographical areas when they're initially going in. Uh, and probably two different, two different levels of your ability to regulate. So if I have an understanding of what the research question is, I'm happy to undertake it.
Would that be permissible then to offer an amendment to have you research that or what would be the process then?
I don't think it would be an amendment. You're just giving a direction to staff. So you don't have to.
Okay.
I don't believe you need to have an actual motion if there's a sufficient consensus to have staff look into that.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Um, maybe a pot potentially is a that might address multiple issues with this would be going off of what Director Kenyon had said. And based on the information we've been able to gather here tonight, it's a few bad actors. They are not local businesses for the most part. That's an exception. So and I think we're both having the same concern. We don't want to hurt local businesses with this. Um, and so I maybe another way we could do that, Director Kenyon had brought up that there's, you know, a minimum allowable threshold of like, hey, you might have, you know, you've dealt with this issue. You guys are doing your thing, acting in good faith. You have, you know, there's locks on your carts, whatever, but stuff has happened because it's not difficult to disable those locks. I was just looking that up. So um, maybe there could be like a minimum threshold. And then to counsel uh, person Bowers' suggestion of wanting to charge more, then you charge a higher fee on those other ones where there is above that level. And so yeah, there's a freebie of this amount and the people that just kind of inadvertently have those smaller amounts, which tends to be local businesses, it sounds like. And if yours gets, and if you go up above that amount, then you're getting charged $150 for your carts to be returned. And that would offset that staff time and it would deal with those larger offenders instead of dragnetting smaller groups.
I just want to say that we can't charge fees that are more than cost recovery. Um, so being punitive.
But wouldn't that be the overall cost recovery?
Required by law to charge fees that are associated with the cost of the service. So you can't kind of accumulate fees.
Oh, you can't accumulate. So you can't like say, because we picked up these 10, the the cost of, you can't say that the overall cost of cost of cart pickup is X amount. And so we're going to divide that up and it's going to be, because in other words, if it's 8420 or whatever it said, and I'm sorry, I can't pull up the page. But it's like, if you're saying that it's that much money based off of how much, I mean, did you guys kind of like calculate it based off of how much?
This was already, this has been in place for.
It's already been there.
Yeah, several years. I'm not sure, but I can't say when they, when they did the first round of this, um, they did put a fine feature into the ordinance. So we can charge fines for businesses that continue to be a problem. That's part of it also.
The difference between a fine and a fee. Okay.
The fee is cost recovery and if they become to be more of a nuisance and causing a problem, we can charge, we can fine them.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that was a way that we could spare, you know, more kind of like local small that are acting in good faith and really kind of let that kind of burden of cost really fall where it's at, it sounds like.
How about?
There is an ability to do it, Director Kenyon said, and you just waive, you know, not until they get five carts do we start charging.
Yeah, but then you lose that $84 per cart.
Then from that point, we could charge $84 on. We couldn't go back and charge for the previous five that we didn't charge them for.
Councilmember Castellano, did you have something?
I would be willing to entertain a friendly amendment to have a a grace period for the first one to five carts uh, per business. Um, is this like ever or annually that you're interested in?
I have no concept of how many carts they're picking up because I don't, in a month?
Yeah.
Like so many.
A lot, yeah.
Would it be reasonable to allow a a grace amount for?
It's it's just at this point, we're years and years and years into this. It's not a new problem. So I mean, I will say we we really only have a problem with a few place, like this isn't going to affect very many places, most likely. There are very few shopping carts from almost any business except for our our bigger uh, bigger problems.
So what I'm hearing then is that this has already been in place. So businesses, say, Eureka Natural Foods, say these smaller businesses, they're already aware of this process. They've already been practicing this.
Yeah, the only difference is that now instead of just taking them straight to the dump, we'll take them back to the business if they're still in good shape, just because it's easier for us to manage that, just from the volume of carts that we end up with.
So would they have been charged before?
I'm not sure how.
I know there was a $25 fee at one point.
It's been the 84 for, I'm not sure, for four years, maybe?
Pardon me?
That was pre 25 was pre 2020 when the last update was.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not sure the history of, I know that in the last since code enforcement became part of development services, I don't believe we've charged anything. Um, which has been at least three or four months, maybe longer.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Okay, so they the only thing that's going to change because they've been getting charged this whole time?
They haven't been in the very recent past. I'm not sure about the history. Code enforcement just got put under development services.
Okay, does any?
Prior to that, did we did charge when Eddie, the cart czar was around. Yes, we were charging businesses.
So but now we'll deliver their carts back to them. So that almost seems like we're helping them even more if we're just charging them the same amount, but now we're going to give them back.
Yes, we are.
That was what I, yeah.
So we're just helping out the most egregious offenders, but we think this is somehow going to deter them.
It's not, I'm sorry.
It's more of a burden on us. So when we're doing that and you're doing with so many different things, you're you're storing them down at the courtyard for a very long period of time. As a matter of fact, it got to the point where it became an issue where we were running out of storage. Now, instead of having to do that, we can pick them up right then and it's efficient because they're typically close as direct as Chief Building Official Riley said, it's probably closer to pick these up in the spots where we find them and take them directly back to the business than it is to take them back to West Houghton to 14th Street.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, I don't think I, I I'm not sure why I didn't, that part didn't click for me. Um, I I would be in the future um, open to entertaining a fine of some sorts for people that are really getting a crazy amount of carts brought back to them.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I know I know Councilmember Castellano had made a friendly amendment and I'm curious if that's still out there.
I did not make a friendly amendment.
Oh, you would be, okay.
I said I would be willing to entertain one, but I am not willing to make one.
Councilmember Bauer?
Can I call for the question?
Well, this is, this is the first reading.
Yeah.
This is the first reading. Just as a reminder, this isn't the final. Um, but the motion maker needs to call for the question. If that were, or the second. Oh, anyone can. Yes, you can call for the question, Councilmember Bauer. Are you calling for the question? Okay, Councilmember Bauer is calling for the question. Please vote.
Three yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez votes no, Councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries.
Thank you. This moves us to reports and action items. League of Cities Voting Delegate.
Is that you, Pam? Yes, as you know, um, the annual conference for Cal Cities is in Long Beach in October. And we must delegate a voting, uh, or a member from council to vote at the business section of the meeting and an alternate. At this time, I believe everyone has signed up to go. So it would be up to you um, to if you're interested in serving in this role.
I have to leave on Thursday and not Friday, believe voting is on Friday. So just to say, uh, please don't consider me for this role.
So does someone want to nominate someone?
I'm happy to do it. I've done it in the past. Um, it's no big deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
You do a great job. So can we get a nomination for an alternate?
Really? Nobody, okay, fine. If.
Katie's not here.
That, yeah. Uh, if if no one, if no one present wants it, uh, I'll I'll do it.
Okay. All right. So do we have to vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we have Councilmember Bauer as the lead and Councilmember Fernandez as the alternate. We don't have to take public comment on that. We do. No, we don't.
Yeah.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one in the chambers, do you see anybody on Zoom?
No.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council for a motion. Anyone?
Sorry. I I move the Councilmember Bauer serve as the voting delegate with Councilmember Fernandez serving as the alternate at the Cal Cities. Um, for the voting delegate for the League of California Cities Cities meeting to be held at the LOCC Annual Conference on Long Beach, October 8th to 10th, 2025.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Thank. Oh, um, four yes votes, Councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries. Thank you.
That moves us to Humboldt County Association of Governments Memorandum of Understanding with City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This item before you is an MOU, a memorandum memorandum of understanding with Humboldt County Association of Governments. Um, Humboldt County Association of Governments applied for a grant through Caltrans. It's a pro, it's a project planning grant through Caltrans with a bunch of sub applicants, the city of Eureka being one of those sub applicants, as well as uh, Trinidad Rantoria, Yurok Tribe, City of Arcata, City of Blue Lake, City of Trinidad and the County of Humboldt. And so all of those are sub applicants as a part of this. The um, grant is going towards a planning grant that will allow for HCOG and Humboldt Transit Authority to look into um, the transportation services that they provide and zoning associated with it and come up with a comprehensive plan to improve efficiencies for the routes and improve ridership and and potentially improve um, times of routes and having more flexibility on those times. Um, there is a typo in the agenda summary. Um, in the agenda summary, it lists 62,000 um, $150 is a match coming from City of Eureka. That is way overinflated. That is the match um, associated with all of the sub applicants. So Arcade, Eureka's portion of that match is $8,000 in staff time. So um, in approving this, you'll approve that staff time to be used for the purposes of this grant and um, the MOU with HCOG and HTA and the other sub applicants to assist in the Humboldt partnership partnering assets and authorities for comprehensive transit project planning through the Caltrans grant. So if there's any questions available.
Questions? City Manager Slattery? Okay. And do we need to open this up to the public? Yes?
Yes.
So we'd open this up to public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Wow, seeing no one. Wow, seeing no one, we'll move it over to Zoom.
I see no one on Zoom.
So we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a vote. Councilmember Fernandez?
Is is this as simple as saying approve staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, uh, and I just wanted to say thank you for pointing that out because that was one discrepancy I did notice between the MOU and the uh, the uh, the summaries, you know, difference between eight thousand dollars and sixty-two. So thank you for clarifying that.
Great, so we have a motion in a second, please vote.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries.
Great, are there any future agenda items? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I just wanted to follow up and find out if there's, if there's a plan in the future. I know I'd asked maybe a couple months ago about us, maybe it wasn't, maybe it's like six weeks ago, um, about us, a future report on how we can make things more accessible, like various different, having different departments talk about how things can be more accessible.
Yeah, we, we're gonna look at that as, I interpreted that and I apologize if I was wrong, as it was relating to trails. And so.
Um, I was, I, no apology necessary because I talked about trails as part of that comment, but I was saying, for example, you know, in the Parks Department this, but that it got me thinking about making sure we are accessible in a variety of places and what we were doing to address accessibility.
Okay, so yeah, a part, uh, Community Services is looking into the trails aspect and can look into the parks aspect, and then we can start talking. We are doing some upgrades related to our um website and A- and ADA accessibility and stuff. So um we will bring that back. I'll discuss it in Department Head tomorrow and get an overall idea of when we can bring it back.
Just was something I want to follow up on. Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, I know I brought it up in my report. I just wanted to make sure that it is something that we could discuss uh at our strategic plan meeting, and that would be to uh have a portion on there dedicated to a community needs assessment.
So yeah, with consensus from council, um, just as an up, I was going to do this update as my city manager report, but I can do it now. Um, we are meeting as staff. We have established criteria for strategic visioning and categories for that through um the consultant Karen Deemer's discussion with you guys as well as staff. We've put together um kind of a framework on how that's going to work. Staff is going to be meeting um next Wednesday to provide their input related to those goals. And then um get that to council prior to the September sixth date. And then in the September sixth date will be a time where we can bring those things up. So um however we want to do it, i- i- it can be brought up as a part of that strategic visioning. Um, or, you know, it can be discussed now and brought up separate to that. That's up to council.
Yeah, I'd be fine with discussing it as you laid out.
Okay.
So do we have consensus on that? Thumbs up all around.
And I apologize, what's, community needs assessment. Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you for your brief city manager report, City Manager Slattery. Thank you for all of you that stuck around and enjoyed this rather short meeting. We appreciate you. We're adjourned.